Welcome to the February 26, 2013 meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Friedman.
Here.
Manukian.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Friedman.
I invite you to rise and join me in renewing our pledge to the flag.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, in the physical presence of justice.
Please remain standing for the invocation. February is Black History Month. It is a time for us to come together as Americans and pay tribute to those individuals of African heritage who have been oppressed and who have risen above their suffering to contribute to the unfading fabric of our national identity and culture. Amongst the great leaders of the African-American community was Reverend Martin Luther King Jr., who wrote that, quote, "All labor that uplifts humanity has dignity and importance and should be undertaken with painstaking excellence." Let us pray this evening that the labor of this council will uplift the citizenry of our city and that the dialogue about these important issues will be afforded the dignity and importance it deserves, both within these chambers and without. We pray for guidance and wisdom so that these talks will be undertaken with the painstaking excellence that Reverend Martin Luther King Jr. referred to in his writings. We pray for love and peace throughout our city and beyond. Amen.
Mr. Clerk, may we have your report?
The agenda for the February 26, 2013 regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, February 21, 2013, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next?
Next on the agenda under presentation appointments is 3A Agenda Preview for the meetings of March 5, 2013.
Ms. Spears.
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for the agenda for the Housing Authority, we have no business agenda items. That afternoon, we do have a special meeting of the Glendale City Council. We have three items: Public Hearing, Director of Community Development, Revisions to the Approved Glendale Galleria Sign Program; another public hearing, Director of Community Development; this is the proposed Central and Wilson Development Project to be located at 130 North Central Avenue; and lastly, Director of Community Development, Proposed Development Project to be located at 301 through 311 North Central Avenue and 313 through 315 West California Avenue. That evening, for the Glendale City Council meeting to commence at 6:00 PM, we have a number of consent items: Chief of Police, this is purchase of simulator software and equipment; Chief of Police, destruction of certain police department records and documents; Director of Public Works, the school crossing guard program; Director of Public Works, we are, it's regarding cancellation of the Beeline Passenger Fare Increase, which is scheduled for July 1 of 2013; Director of Public Works, Fairmont Avenue Park and Ride Facility Project; Director of Public Works, this is regarding the Safe Routes to School Improvement Project, Phase Two; Director of Public Works, Maintenance of Specialized City-Owned Vehicles; General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, Transmittal of Chromium Removal Research Project; and this is a report to the California Department of Health. Under Adoption of Ordinances, we have Ordinance Amending Title 10 of the GMC 1995. And one item under Action, Director of Community Services and Parks, and this is regarding the Glendale's 2014 Rose-Float Entry. And that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next?
Next is City Council and Staff Comments.
City Council or Staff Comments?
Do you want to hear about my adventures over there?
Absolutely. You're all in one piece, which is exciting.
Yes, yes. Well, this weekend, I went from Chevy Chase Canyon up to Bodry. I took Bodry up to Verdugo Motorway. From there, I went all the way to the Experimental Forest. Before then, I took Hostetter Motorway down to La Tuna Canyon, went to Honolulu and came back and took a look at Montrose's 100-year anniversary, actually. I was there, although I wasn't conspicuous. I had my helmet on, sunglasses, shorts, Viking gloves, and all of that. But it looked very nice. I want to congratulate the Montrose Shopping Park Association for their event. It looked like a great event, and I want to congratulate them. I saw some of the bands that were playing over there and some of the regular vendors that were there as well. They were very busy, and I went through the market, and then I rode down south to South Glendale. So then I had my wife pick me up and take me up.
That's what I was going to ask you. What point did you have to be?
After 25 miles, that was it.
At what point did you have to be picked up?
Throw under the white towel.
Very impressive, very impressive. Anyone else? Mr. Najarian?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to warn the residents of a particular process that's going on right now. The folks that would like to build a five-mile tunnel connecting the 710 to the 210 have commissioned a poll, a telephone survey. This is what's called as a push poll, in which the person who is asking the questions strongly suggests a particular answer to the listener and sprinkles in false premises upon which the questions are based. So do not be misled. If someone calls your home from some research survey caller ID number asking you about the 710 tunnel, be sure you tell him exactly, him or her, how you feel about it, and do not be led in any direction by the person asking the poll. And that should be, and there's a lot of other polls also. There's probably some candidate polls going on and some issues facing. Don't ever let anyone tell you what your answer should be or suggest what your answer should be to a particular series of questions or a particular question. So stand up for your rights, tell them exactly how you feel, and don't be misled. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Friedman?
I'd like to mention a few events I attended this week. It's just getting busier and busier in Glendale, in a good way. First, this Saturday, last Saturday and Sunday, Montrose celebrated their 100th anniversary. I hope you went. If you didn't, you're going to have to wait another 100 years for the next centennial, so eat well. But it was a great event, very well attended. There were barbecues, there were, one of the grandson of the founder of Montrose was there. Mike Morgan was there with his book about the history of Montrose. The La Crescenta Historic Society had an amazing booth that had wonderful photographs, kind of then-and-now photographs, that were pretty astounding. There was a horse parade by the San Fernando Rangers. There were kids tap dancing and performing. There were politicians speaking, which was probably the, you know, low point of the event. But a lot of really fun stuff, and I want to congratulate the Shopping Park Association and the CB Montrose Chamber of Commerce for their involvement in providing for the community a really fun and wonderful event. Next, I went to Glen Oaks Elementary School this week for their Read Across America Night, where I was able to administer the oath of reading to elementary school students who were absolutely adorable and very inspiring in their love of reading and books. So I thank them for inviting me and commend those children for being dedicated to spending their life reading from now on. Kalandus had a luncheon. They are a nonprofit that serves emotionally challenged children in the area. I think that they must have raised a lot of money because there had to be 1,000 people in that room. It was just amazing, with the outpouring of support from the Glendale and Burbank and greater tri-city region. So congratulations to them. And lastly, I attended with some of my colleagues the ribbon cutting for the new downtown business community benefit district, which will be a great benefit to the merchants of downtown and to the members of the Glendale community. You may already have seen some of their representatives, who I think wear blue. They're dressed all in blue, and it says Downtown Business District, I think, on their jackets. And they are ambassadors, welcoming people to the city, telling them where different places are if they have questions, and also generally cleaning up the streets during the day and doing useful things. So this was a project that took a couple of years to put together. The downtown merchants group was very involved, along with, you know, the Chamber of Commerce. And it's a real victory to have had this come together, and it's going to be very much a benefit to those businesses in our downtown. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, the Montrose 100th birthday was spectacular. The people to be commended are the Glendale Shopping Park Association that put it all together. They had one heck of a birthday over a two-day period, very well attended. On Sunday, it was jammed, and of course, the weather cooperated, so that was a great event. Then I want to mention the Glendale Veterans Coalition that met last week, had successive meetings, and were moving right along. We've broken up into different committees, including Outreach Committee, another committee that works with women vets, and then a committee that works on Memorial Day commemoration and that type of thing. But anyone wishing to join this committee, you don't have to be a veteran. I'd be happy to have you attend our meetings and give us whatever support you can. And it's focused on veterans across the board, male, female, younger veterans returning from the Gulf Wars, as well as older Vietnam Vet, Korean, and World War II vets. And then sadly, I want to adjourn the meeting in honor of a City of Glendale employee and a longtime resident of Glendale, Geraldine Jerry Ripley. Some of you may remember her from the Central Library, where she worked for many years. She was born in Pasadena, graduated from Hollywood High, met her husband during the Second World War at Camp Callan, and then the couple in 1947 moved to Adams Hill, where Geraldine became very active in the community, in the school district, at John Muir Elementary School. And she was a librarian at the school until 1980, when she started working at the Glendale Central Library and retired from the city in 1992. She joins her husband, Colonel Theodore Ripley, who passed in 1987, and leaves two daughters, Pamela Dombrowski and Karen O'Kelly, and four sons, James, Richard, David, and Michael, and 14 grandchildren. And tonight, we have members of her family joining us as we acknowledge her service to the Glendale community. One of her sons is currently, his name is Michael, he's currently employed by our Public Works Division as an Assistant IT Application Specialist. And Tad Dombrowski, who's also a member of the family, is a parking manager for our public works. So it's a pleasure to have you here this evening.
I want to thank the council and all my coworkers who've emailed me or contacted me with memories of my mother. She enjoyed a long life. She passed on her 88th birthday on the 12th. Yasmin remembers her from the library, I know, and a number of other city employees. Cindy Cleary especially remembers her in her puppets and the storytimes in the Young People's Library, where she spent most of her time. Just want to thank you all.
Thank you. She was a wonderful, go ahead.
Thanks. That was actually, he stole my spot. That was actually my story, because I remember those times at the library and the puppets and everything else. It was important to me, and I think a lot of people got joy out of it, so thanks.
She was a great lady. Okay, anything from the staff? Ms. Kasakian?
Mr. Mayor and Council, I just want to remind people, in case they haven't noticed, that election season is upon us. People can go to the city's elections website, glandalevotes.org. On there, they can get information, including the candidate statements and contact information, emails for the various candidates who are running for office. We have three seats for City Council that are up for consideration, as well as the treasurer's seat, city clerk's seat. We have three measures, Measures A, B, and C, as well as the three seats for Glendale Unified School District. The Community College Board will not have an election this year because there were as many candidates as there were seats available, and they have chosen to appoint those individuals directly. And the other thing I want to remind people about is to stay tuned to TV and watch GTV6 because we have some interesting public service announcements that are going to be coming on the airwaves. We're working with the students at Clark Magnet High School to hopefully bring some of those to fruition before Election Day. But I want to share one in particular with you that has garnered some attention from counties such as Riverside. The Los Angeles County Clerk actually mentioned this the other day in one of their tweets, and it's a public service announcement encouraging people to vote that's starring or featuring Jeannie Mai, a fashion correspondent for the Today Show and the Style Network for a show called How Do I Look? Now let me see if we can get this going. So obviously, we're targeting a different demographic with that ad. We're hoping to encourage young people to get out and vote, and it's been very well received. It's actually one of the more popular YouTube videos on our website. It's already garnered about 618 views, and it's getting attention all over the county.
Are you saying that that gets more views than the City Council meeting does online?
Believe it or not, it's amazing, but believe it or not, it actually does.
You know, it's a great spot. I put it on my Facebook page, and people really respond to it. I don't know if it's the blue hair or the enthusiasm, but definitely it's a really fun and creative spot, so I hope it's seen by a lot of people.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mr. Kasakian. What's next?
Next is consent items, including the minutes following a routine and may be acted upon by one motion, any member of council or the audience. Requesting separate consideration, may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed.
Move the consent calendar at 5.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Friedman.
Yes.
Manukian.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next is oral communication. This will be the three-minute portion reserved for community announcements. The full five-minute portion will be revisited at the conclusion of all city visits.
Natalie Camuro, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and council members. I'm Natalie Camuro, and I'm president-elect of the Rotary Club of Glendale, which meets noons on Thursdays. And we're here with, I'm joined, there you are, Brian Berg is our current president and several other members of our club. We wanted to invite you to an upcoming event. It's our first, we hope it's our first annual Jewel City Fun and Fitness Ride. We've been organizing this in collaboration with Walk Bike Glendale. It's sponsored by Glendale Adventist Medical Center. And what we're doing is staging it at Verdugo Park. It will feature several, two different kinds of rides for more ambitious riders, Councilman Manukian. 33 miles with a 2,600-foot incline or elevation. And then we'll have a ride and glide, which is more my style, which is about seven miles. And then we'll have free bike safety courses in the morning at the park hosted by Walk Bike Glendale. The event will also have live music, we'll have vendors and food trucks there, so when people come back and are hungry, they'll have someplace to eat. So we're looking forward to having this event. We hope you can join us, and we wanted your viewers to be aware of it. If they would like more information, currently, they can go to the website for our club. It's glandalerotarynoon.org. We have the event information and sponsorship information on the right-hand side. And we also have a Gmail account, which is thejewelcityride@gmail.com. And shortly, we will have an active.com site for registration.
I'm going to have to get a new bike for this one.
Yes. Lots of gears.
I was just going to say, Mr. Manukian, it sounds like something right up your alley.
Yes.
My wife and I love to walk up the Tuna Canyon up to Verdugo Motorway, and it's a beautiful, beautiful ride. We walk it, and so we would like to challenge you to consider coming and doing it.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And Mr. Kasakian, we spoke earlier that maybe we, he and I had a contest a few years ago of supporting Glendale Healthy Kids.
Yes.
And we may look to doing something.
I may have backslid since that competition, Doc. We were in a competition to see who could lose more weight, and we were going to donate money to Glendale Healthy Kids. We both met our goals, but since then, I've rediscovered candy bars again, so.
They're very easy to.
I will pull out the bicycle from the garage and dust it off and hopefully join you.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Leon Mayer, followed by Bill Wiseman.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council and staff. My name is Leon Mayer, and I'm here on behalf of the Glendale Library and the friends of the library. It always gives me pleasure to hear how people in the past have been devoted years to the library, and that the deceased lady did a great job over the years helping the library. And I also want to point out that Glendale Library cooperated with Montrose for their centennial. We were involved in activities, and actually, on February 20, we had Art Coburn, who wrote this book last year about the Great Crescenta Valley Flood. We had a lot of people from La Crescenta and Montrose there for that event. Now, our next event at the library is a One Book, One Glendale event, and we're fortunate to have Hector Tobar as our featured speaker and author. Hector Tobar, for a long time, has been a columnist for the Los Angeles Times. He also is a Pulitzer Prize winner for his book several years ago involving the L.A. riots. And he's written a book called The Barbarian Nurseries, and the subtitle is What Not to Do When Your Credit Card Is Refused. Now that sounds a little funny, but the book is not a funny book. The book goes into briefly the lady who raised two children, a Hispanic lady who raised two children that lost their parents in a sense. The parents had financial problems and other problems, and they left the home. They left her a home at this, they left her alone at this home to raise the children. And it's a great book. It's a great novel, and when you get into it, you'll see that it also goes into other community attitudes, community activities, and some even immigration issues. So One Book, One Glendale, March 14. Come early. We expect a good crowd, but more important, go to the library. We have the book at the library. Go down, buy it, read it before you buy it, if you wish, and hopefully, we'll have refreshments there, and we'll talk about the refreshments next week. It's free. Parking is validated. We're looking forward to seeing you there. And also, when you get to the library, look around for how you can join the friends and become a supporter of the library. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Bill Wiseman, followed by Evelyn Horgan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. My name is Bill Wiseman from far north Glendale, and I'm here to announce several events that are coming up in the next couple of days. The first event is the Crescenta Valley 710 Community Forum, which is going to be held tomorrow night, Wednesday, February 27, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM, in the Rosemont Middle School Cafeteria, which is at 4725 Rosemont Avenue in La Crescenta. We are going to discuss the alternatives that Metro and Caltrans have identified to, quote-unquote, "close the gap." And please join us to learn how the State Route 710 extension will affect the quality of life in the foothills and how to take action. We will have a number of distinguished presenters, including Metro Board Member and Glendale Council Member Aaron Najarian. This event is hosted by the Crescenta Valley Town Council with support from the La Cuenyata Flint Ridge City Council, the Glendale City Council, and the No 710 Action Committee. For further information, please contact Crescenta Valley Town Council Member Frank Bayt at B E Y T at A T T dot net, or see me for a flyer that will describe the event. The second event I wanted to mention is on Thursday, February 28, the Crescenta Valley Community Association will be presenting a candidate's forum for Glendale City Council. That's Thursday, February 28, this Thursday, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM. And this event will be held in the La Crescenta branch of the L.A. County Library, which is at 2809 Foothill Boulevard in La Crescenta, the corner of Foothill and La Crescenta. Please join us for an informal and congenial discussion with the candidates running for Glendale City Council. For more information about this event or CVCA, please contact Sharon Ragavachary at, and let me spell this out, S H A R O N C H A R Y at gmail dot com. And hopefully, you'll be able to attend either or both of these events, and we look forward to seeing you there. And if anyone would like a flyer, please get in touch with me after I leave the podium. Thank you.
Thank you. Evelyn Horgan.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. I'd like to announce two events, please. The first is the World Day of Prayer service here in Glendale at Salem Lutheran on Saturday, March 2. We will have not just coffee, but breakfast for anyone who attends. Please come at 9 o'clock for that, or anywhere until 10:00, our service begins. World Day of Prayer is, has happened in the United States since 1920, and here in Glendale, we have participated since the very early days. Now, hundreds of thousands of women, men, youth, and children from around the world and in every region gather to collectively worship on the first Friday or Saturday in March. And World Day of Prayer is supported by an offering given by individuals through those annual services. Each of the 170 countries celebrating World Day of Prayer has an organized country committee. Each country committee is responsible for determining the use of the offerings as it relates to the theme for each year. Offering grants are made to women and children's groups in each country. Then the theme of this year's service is "I Was a Stranger and You Welcomed Me." And Glendale being a city of immigrants, well, actually, the country is a, I'm a second-generation immigrant myself. The third, um, second event is the Glendale and Foothill Communities Crop Hunger Walk. This is our 18th annual walk. We would love to see you come and attend. It's on Sunday afternoon. It's an interfaith, community-wide effort. We had about 300 people participate last year. Please, everybody who can come, please come, donate what you can, bring canned food or canned food, packages of cereal, baby food, donate what you can, either at the walk or online. And online, it is cwsglobal.org forward slash Glendale, California. Thank you. I hope the whole community will participate. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Mr. Mayor, I would just like to make one brief announcement, because you won't. It's your Mayor's Prayer Breakfast, March 21, 2013, at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. I know that you're too humble to make this announcement, so we're going to have to do it in your stead. 6:30 AM is when the doors open. It's going to be a wonderful breakfast. That will start off.
Time's up.
With bagpiper, Aaron Shaw, who's always been at these Mayor's Prayer breakfasts, an excellent musician. Musical entertainment is going to be David Schultz, who will be the soloist. David Schultz is a very well-known gentleman and businessman here in the community. And the Glendale Community College Chamber Ensemble will also be joining us. Master of Ceremonies is our own Police Chief, Ron DePampa, and our keynote speaker is Pat Boone. So this is the 50th anniversary of the Mayor's Prayer Breakfast. Tickets are available at Beverly Ann Flowers on North Brand Boulevard, 1150 North Brand Boulevard, and through the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce. For more information, individuals can call 626-429-2198. A full breakfast is included. Tickets are $25, and parking is free.
Okay, thank you. Next.
Are you attending?
I will be there at what time? 6:30?
6:30, yes, sir.
There at 6:29.
Okay.
Next item is under Action Items, 8A Director of Public Works regarding proposed amendment to Title 10 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, adding Section 10.40.200 relating to Title 10 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995, adding Section 10.40.200 relating parking meter exemption for military veterans processing, possessing special license plates. A1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Ms. Chorcha.
Yes, sir. Very briefly, this is a matter that was brought forward by council as an opportunity to take advantage of a state law that allows for this type of exemption, and also to honor military veterans by, in some small way, allowing them to access different parking areas through special plates. Mr. Zernit, is there anything more detailed than that?
I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that, that's it in a nutshell.
Question. I brought this forward, I heard about this through Karen Bass, that the state had passed a rule to allow this, and I felt that it was really the least we can do for these veterans. Just to be clear, it's not all veterans that will receive this privilege. It's veterans that are disabled veterans or veterans who have certain distinguished medals, like the Medal of Honor, et cetera. My only question is, you know, when you sell a car, the plate goes with the car. Does this plate go with the car as well? So, does the next person get the benefit of that plate?
No, Ms. Friedman, the owner of that plate can transfer that to their next vehicle. You may often see, in fact, some of the pictures that showed some of the original plates that actually, older plates that have the distinction on that, so.
But could they sell this with the car? Because that's, that's really my only concern.
No, my understanding is, is that even if it's a personalized plate and the owner of the car doesn't wish to keep that, that plate, that car is re-registered with a new plate, unless the new owner is eligible and would like to put their own on there.
So, I would like to thank my colleagues for allowing me to bring this forward. I think it's really important, you know, just to make these veterans' lives a little easier, but also as a gesture to say that the city of Glendale appreciates their special service.
Introduce the ordinance. The ordinance has been introduced. Next.
At 8B is Director of Community Service and Parks regarding proposed indoor soccer program at the Glendale Civic Auditorium. B1 is a motion approving implementation of program to operate Monday through Thursday, and the proposed rental fees for the program as approved by the Parks Recreation and Community Services Commission. B2 is a resolution appropriating $34,000 on startup costs.
Ms. Mara Quintero, members of the city council, based on inquiries that our sports recreation sees on a consistent basis, the competition for and the degree at which our soccer fields are booked up, and the informal rogue soccer that is played in our parks on a regular basis, there is a great demand for soccer fields in this community. We currently only have three soccer fields, as you note, to the sports complex, one at Pacific Park. And as I've indicated previously, we are exploring the potential of converting one of our baseball fields at the sports complex to artificial turf in order to be able to use it for dual purpose, to include soccer and expand capacity for more soccer at the sports complex. You also know that hopefully by September, we'll be starting construction on the Pacific Park Artificial Turf Project, which will, again, expand the capacity of that field for increased soccer play year-round. At the same time, we do have a facility in the Civic Auditorium, which pretty much sits idle Monday through Thursday, that would accommodate an indoor soccer program. So, as a result, Community Services and Parks Staff has developed a proposal for an indoor soccer program, which Mr. Bulanikian will explain to you in a minute. We did review the proposed program with the Parks Recreation Community Services Commission in February and received positive feedback and a motion recommending the city council's approval. So, at this time, I'd like to introduce Onig Bulanikian, who is a Community Services Manager in charge of the Sports and Recreation Section in the department, and he's got a slide presentation, including graphics to show you exactly how the containment system and the soccer field would look inside the Civic Auditorium.
Thank you, Mayor Quintero, members of the council, city staff. My name is Onig Bulanikian, Community Services Manager overseeing the Recreation and Community Services Section. Today, I want to present real quickly the proposed indoor soccer program at the Civic Auditorium. As an enterprise operation during the last two years, CSP staff has been in the process of identifying programs and strategies to increase revenue while reducing operational costs. Strategies to increase revenues include improving and expanding marketing and advertising and recruitment efforts, including a new and improved webpage to attract new clients. And we just learned that the Santa Monica Civic Auditorium will undergo some renovations this summer, so we're going to try to attract those clients from Santa Monica to use Glendale Civic Auditorium. Partnering with other banquet halls for cross-referrals. Consistently, at a minimum, charging out-of-pocket costs for event rentals and deliveries that we provide throughout the city. Recruiting former clients to return, such as art of boxing promotions. Completing cosmetic improvements to the front of the auditorium to make it more attractive and marketable, and pursuing options for weekday rentals. Strategies to reduce operational costs include consolidating work in-house when it's more cost-effective, such as waxing the floors. Instead of using a city vendor, we have staff that are trained in waxing our hardwood floors. Consolidating auditorium maintenance contracts with the same vendors used by other city departments for cost efficiency. And further reducing hourly staff by altering the strategy for event staffing. The Civic Auditorium is rented 38 to 40 weekends per year. As we all know, Monday through Thursday, it sits idle. CSP staff continues to observe an increased demand for soccer field use throughout the city. We have three outdoor soccer fields available for rent, two at the sports complex, one at Pacific Community Center. A number of soccer groups in the community have requested to use current facilities for indoor soccer at Pacific or Maple Park. And based on the availability of these facilities, the size, the logistics involved with using the space for indoor soccer, and overall facility design, it's infeasible to use and rent these facilities for indoor soccer. Civic Auditorium, however, would be an ideal location. Staff has researched the feasibility of operating an indoor soccer program inside the Civic Auditorium Monday through Thursday. In an effort to address the demand of soccer fields in Glendale, staff is proposing the introduction of an indoor soccer program, which will utilize the 10,800 square feet upper level of the Civic Auditorium. We'd like to use the 6,000 square feet of space for indoor soccer, which would accommodate six-by-six or seven-on-seven soccer play, which is standard for indoor soccer. The program will be targeted for both youth and adult leagues versus drop-in open play. And play would be used, played actually, on the hardwood floor. We're going to make it a requirement to have indoor soccer shoes, also known as footsole shoes, Brazilian soccer, or tennis shoes. We don't, we're not, we're going to have staff monitor basically the player's shoes and have no cleats on the floor to prevent damage. A containment system will be purchased, used to define the playing area and prevent the ball from going beyond the field of play. This will minimize damage to the walls of the Civic Auditorium. It is estimated that the containment system, it'll take about an hour and a half to two hours to set up and tear down. And it's really easy to, basically, it's like a puzzle. No tools are needed. It's really easy to install. And it is projected that any given time, there will be an average of 25 players, including referees and spectators, during practice time. Proposed hours of operation Monday through Thursday, 5:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Our hope is, the program will be very popular among schools, high schools, and middle schools that would like to rent the facility before 5:00. We would like to make it available to them so they can practice for their soccer program. Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. during summer break. Our hope is that youth league or an adult, youth league will use the facility for a summer day camp program, soccer athletic camp program, half a day or a full day to increase revenue. So, that's why we want to make the arena available Monday through Thursday, 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. during summer break. And of course, Fridays and Sundays, based on availability. We'd like to keep the weekends open for larger events, but if we have a weekend available for soccer, we'd like to open it up to birthday parties, weekend tournaments, and so on. Proposed fees for use, standard hourly rate, $75 per hour, which will include one employee to work the rental. Filming hourly rate will be $112.50, which is 150% of the standard rate. That's our commercial rate that we charge across the board for all of our facilities. We're hoping to market the arena to production companies and film crews and location scouts so they can use the facility for filming. And also, weekend tournaments. If we have a weekend available, we'll have our sports section organize a citywide tournament with a cost of $375 per team.
$75 an hour, kind of low.
It is.
Seven versus seven.
It is kind of low. The benchmark survey that we conducted, the lowest price was 80. We want to keep it low for now to entice groups and have a popular program, and then hopefully, we'll come back to council or end commission to increase the rates. But $75, I believe, should be a fair enough hourly rate for now. Birthday parties up to 50 people, $400 minimum, 2.5 hours, plus $70 per hour for every additional hour. This is a new thing that I've noticed. We, indoor soccer arena in Northridge, they have birthday parties. It's a little bit more expensive, but 50 people for $400. We can market it to our AYSO, our youth groups. After a soccer game on a Saturday or Sunday, they can use the Civic Auditorium as a birthday party, for a birthday party. Fiscal impact, the initial year, we're estimating 110,000 in revenue with operating expenses of $30,000. The operating expense will be for staffing and also another 800 a year, which is including the $30,000 for tape for the floor. One-time expense of $34,000. The pro-containment wall and the acrylic glass will be around $34,000 with two goals. Net profit loss for the first year, net profit will be $46,000, and then subsequent years with a net profit of $80,000. The first slide will show the pro-wall containment system. It's about 36 inches high, really very easy to install, no tools are needed. The next slide will show the acrylic glass. It's about 72 inches high, so this will minimize damage if the ball is kicked hard. But we're going to try to also enforce indoor soccer ball, which is a little heavier, not an average soccer ball. So, I don't, there won't be damage to the walls.
Will not be flying high?
It won't be flying high, yeah.
It's not going to be like a pinball machine?
No, no, no. It won't be flying high. Here's another indoor soccer rink with hardwood floor. And last but not least.
And do we have the space? Do we have the same amount of space that we would need?
6,000 square feet, we're estimating.
And it's right shape and everything?
Right shape, yes. And this is what it will look like. This is the Civic Auditorium upper level. And this is how it will look like with the acrylic walls, acrylic glass. So, any questions?
Friedman.
I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
First, are we sure that we're going to be able to cover the investment in the first year, the way that you've shown?
Yes, we will cover it.
We will cover it.
Yes, we're going to market it to AYSO, the youth leagues. I have at least seven teams calling me requesting to use the facility for indoor soccer.
Okay.
We're going to go to the fields on San Fernando. We're going to go to the fields on Ferraro.
We're confident we'll cover it.
Yes.
We're not just going to be stuck with a bunch of railings and, okay.
We will cover it.
Do we need bleachers? Are we going to be asked for bleachers at some point?
We're going to have, Civic Auditorium has chairs. We have about 1,000 chairs.
That's good enough. We don't need to build bleachers. And then lastly, are there any safety liability issues with this equipment?
No.
This use? None at all?
No.
So, everyone signs a waiver?
Everyone's going to sign a waiver, and everyone's going to sign a waiver, and whoever participates in our tournaments will sign an indemnity form. And we're going to also require the leagues to provide insurance.
And that's including if our equipment breaks and somebody says it's our fault because we didn't have the equipment?
Yes.
So, we're not going to be facing any issues?
No.
Okay.
All our liability forms are approved by the city attorney, and our insurance is approved by our risk management.
And Mr. Garcia, you can promise us, the way he promised they're going to cover the cost, you're going to promise that we not going to have any issues with liability?
We're putting all the appropriate risk management safeguards in place, both in terms of liability waivers, insurance, and making sure our own insurance covers this to mitigate all the issues.
And you can guarantee that people are going to have lots of fun?
Can guarantee people won't sue, because you know how our society is, but I, yeah.
You have a better chance of guaranteeing the fun part than...
Right, exactly.
People will have fun, yes.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Weaver.
I don't know much about soccer. I'm a football fan. But you're estimating about, American football, you're estimating about seven players per side.
Yes.
At what time? Seven-on-seven, right?
Seven-on-seven, yes.
Okay, and then I presume there's a bench?
Yes.
Another five, six?
Another two or three, depending on...
Three, so that's about 10?
10 people per team.
10 per team?
Yes.
So, that's 20. Then the referees, there's what, two?
One or two.
That's 22. And then if it's youth soccer, the parents are probably going to drive them there or be around. And if there's 10 on each side, that's 20 students, and I bet you they have at least one parent for most of them. You say you're, I think the average would be around 25 there?
Average for adult play will be around 20.
Oh, for just the adults?
Yeah.
Because you're already up to 22, telling the parents to stay home. So, I just wondered if we've underestimated personnel we have to have there. We're not going to need any police there?
No, no police.
We just need the two referees, somebody, it'd be one civic person will open the doors and then step back.
And monitor, monitor the play, make sure they all have signed indemnity forms, make sure they have their indoor soccer shoes or footsole soccer shoes, and we're good to go.
I'd be willing to bet you're going to have a lot more than 25 there. We'll see.
I hope we do, to be honest.
Yeah, so do I. When it's rainy and cold.
Well, let me remind that the referees have the power to eject anyone from the whole field, actually.
Really?
If, if they're out of line, the referees have that authority, not the power. They have the authority.
Including the coaches, like Mr. Manu, and issues with.
I've never been, I've never been kicked out, but I, as a referee, I've done many games. The referees have the authority to, to take people out and stop the game until that individual leaves the field. I think they are a better arbiter of what goes on in a game and around the game than, I think, the police department or, or the staff. I think this is a great program. I'm trying, the thing that I'm trying to figure out is how can I participate? I haven't played soccer in years, but, but I've, you know, like I said, I've refereed and coached, and this seems like a great, fun program for adults. If, as Mr. Quintero retires, I think I'm going to try to drag him in, see if I can be, see if he can be in the opposite team.
Absolutely.
Maybe I can trip him once or twice.
So, you ride your bicycle down to play soccer?
Absolutely, absolutely. I think this is, this is going to go over very well. I'm confident as well that there's a number of teams out there who are willing, who are looking for a place, not willing, they're looking for a place to play, I think. And as these leagues and teams form and people come forward, I think we're going to have a lot of revenue. I, I would be in favor, actually, of knocking it up, the fee for the hour, for hourly play to $80, and, and generate more revenue for the city, I think. Again, it's a great program. Great for staff to look into this. Thanks for bringing it up. I think every penny that we can get out of that Civic Auditorium is, is worth it, especially when it deals with activities such as these. Congratulations, I'm all in favor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one more question.
Yes.
Parking, will they park on the lower lot?
They will park in the lower lot or the customer service lot? After 5:00?
Okay, the, the parking garage will be closed.
Yes.
That won't be used, Jeff.
Ms. Friedman.
Yeah, just another couple of last questions.
Sure.
What about, if there's damage to the lights, if someone kicks a ball up into the light, would that be the league's responsibility to pay for?
For any indemnity agreement, we would include any damages.
So, they would have to put up some kind of bond or guarantee?
You know, I don't, I don't know the details of that, how that would work.
But they would pay for it?
We'll look at that.
If there was damage.
We'll look at that.
Just because you've got balls flying around, and, you know, it's not like a gym where we have cage light fixtures. So, I want to be sure that if there's damage caused to anything, that whoever's renting it is on the hook for it.
Savings pretty high.
We'll take a look at that.
Okay, and then, secondly, you know, this is maybe a weird question or an unfair question, but we're trying to market the Civic for all kinds of uses. Banquets, I went to a beautiful banquet there where they completely transformed that space into just a really elegant facility. We have antique shows sometimes. Hopefully, they'll come back, you know, more and more. Is this facility going to just smell like a locker room or like a gym, or is there a way that that can be mitigated to where those other uses are going to not be, you know, turned off when they walk in?
Those are the use, they won't be turned off. Basically, Monday through Thursday, there'll be soccer play, and then Thursday, the, we have, will be open for rentals on Friday, Saturday. It'll give a 24 to 48-hour turnaround.
Well, I understand, but I've walked into gyms that smell like gyms, even if no one's been in there for a week. Are we going to be able to keep it clean enough to where?
Yes.
We will.
Yes.
Before...
Before a, before a rental comes in on the weekend, what is the regiment for cleaning the venue?
We dust mop the entire upper level and then we also deodorize it with Pine Sol. We mop the floor.
So it'll smell like Pine Sol?
Yes. Well, not Pine Sol, deodorizer. I'm mentioning Pine Sol.
Okay, well, I'm going to ask staff to keep an eye on that and be sensitive to the other uses that come in on the weekends. Because if you have one person rented for an event and it smells bad, you're not going to be able to rent it again to anybody and they're going to complain and want their money back and it's going to be an issue. So Pine Sol, if it smells like Pine Sol, that's not the answer I want to hear either. So, you know, please, you know, just assure me that I'm not going to hear those kinds of complaints from other users. Okay, thank you.
I'm recommending Febreeze. They advertise enough. I don't know if it works or not.
One other question, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Weaver?
If the city wants to rent one of the nights during the week, Monday to Thursday, does this agreement preclude the city or anybody interrupting for fifty-two weeks out of the year? If something came up, we wanted to and says, no, we're canceling this for tonight?
Yeah, we'll cancel the soccer. We'll cancel all the rentals.
You have that option in there?
Yes. We'll cancel the soccer rental to...
As long as there's someone, there's nobody who has that reserved and we have thirty days notice, just like all of our other rental agreements.
By the way, I, I thought this is Monday through Thursday, fifty-two weeks out of the year. So how can we get in there if we, if we decide we want to?
Well, it's available, it's available fifty-two hours, it just means rent it out consistently.
It's not, it's going to be available for soccer, but if we get a rental, such as the mayor prayers breakfast a couple of weeks, we're not going to rent it out that Wednesday night, we're going to have staff set up that Wednesday night for the mayor prayers breakfast.
Okay, but the applicant, I mean, the soccer teams and stuff will know well in advance
Yes.
That that particular night is going to be off limits, so they're coming and wondering what they want.
The non-weekend rentals are so few and far between and those that we do have are pretty well-known and established.
I know, it won't be many, but...
Right, so we would know those well in advance.
It's being the way they are.
Yes.
Okay, I'm very excited about this possibility. I was first approached by the Astorian Soccer Foundation by Jack Iskanian, who first told me about this whole concept. And when I began to investigate it, actually went to a couple of places, I realized what an excellent location this is. I think we're going to have a lot of success, even if we start at seventy-five or eighty dollars. I think over time, because of the geographic location, I think we're going to make quite a bit of money. And I think it's a wonderful use, as we all know, everyone wants to play soccer. Yes, one of my big surprises was how many adult leagues are going to use this location. I talked to lots of soccer players and they were all adamant that the moment that this was available, they would have their friends, doctors, dentists, attorneys, and it's incredible how many professional people are involved in these soccer leagues. In addition to the youth component, I think not only through the Astorian Foundation, but other individual leagues will form and I think we're going to really do really well with this. It's a great use for the auditorium. Okay, I have a number of speakers. I'll give everyone three minutes or less to give us their opinion, starting with Harut Boyajin, followed by Jack Iskanian.
Good evening, Mayor, council members and staff. Already Mayor mentioned my name. I'm a Levonistian Soccer Academy Board Member. And during our board member, more, more meetings, we discussed a lot about indoor soccer in the past and which we don't have unfortunately in Glendale. And, and I know a lot of players personally myself. We play in Pasadena Arcadia Leagues. That's already previous speaker mentioned about how great to have indoor soccer in Glendale, that's good for children and good for adults. It's very difficult to come up fifteen, sixteen players and play in a lot of regular fields, which we don't have that many in Glendale, very handful. So it's easy to come up seven players, eight, and that's good for, again, for children, develop their skills and adults quickly come up the team and play the tournaments instead of going to other cities. And we can help our city to financially make money. And in behalf of our organization, I'm asking Glendale City support indoor soccer to create one and that would be good for everybody and good for the sport and good for the health. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Iskanian, followed by Tony Passarella.
Good evening, I'm Jack Iskanian. Six years ago, I was appointed as a director of Soccer Academy, Astrian Soccer Academy as a volunteer and I'm still volunteer in Soccer Academy. I'd like to make comparison, I have heard question here if you could cover the expenses of this facility. When we started, we rent hour and a half, three days a week, then we made it two hours. As we grew, we made it five days. And now we are looking for seven days, but there is no soccer field in Glendale. So when we started this soccer, youth soccer association, after two years, we started soccer league. We found that it's necessary to involve people in soccer. They say Glendale is Jew's city. We decided to add another name to Glendale to make it Glendale Soccer City. So we created soccer league, which Tri-City Soccer League became affiliated with Cal South Association, which is officially recognized by US Soccer Federation. And we are getting phone calls from Cal South website, they are looking for league to play, teams and individuals. Today, we have ten teams in our Tri-City Soccer League, adult, ten teams, about two hundred people playing in our league. And we are looking for more hours, it's going to take to finish this championship four months. Next championship is going to take seven months to start and finish and it's going to be championship, open championship for Glendale. The winner is going to become a champion of Glendale. So soccer in Glendale is growing rapidly and we are looking for indoor soccer also. We have about four hundred kids assigned in our association and about three, four hundred adult soccer players in our association. So during the winter time, we are looking for closed facility, do not miss youth practices. Because youth, we don't say, it starts from four years old, it goes up to adult. So we don't want these four, five years old kids practice under the rain. So we want closed facility for these kids. That's why indoor soccer in Glendale is necessity. I know a lot of people, a lot of people traveling to Chatsworth, Long Beach, Arcadia, Pasadena to play soccer, indoor soccer. So today, soccer, indoor soccer is necessity in Glendale and I urge your attention and consideration to work for this program.
Okay, thank you very much. Tony Passarella, followed by Artashas Akutavardian.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff and viewing public. My name is Tony Passarella. This is a proverbial no-brainer and I think you guys know that. I mean, just Duran and his people do an amazing job at community services and parks. I mean, I know Onig and several of the, of the staff there, and this is probably one of the strongest departments in all of Glendale. I mean, the kids need more place to play soccer. Soccer is in fact expanding, not only in Glendale, but across the country. And Mrs. Friedman, I can tell you, these kids will have fun. My granddaughter played indoor soccer and it's an absolute kick. So I'm expecting a five to nothing. I'd be very surprised if this doesn't pass five to nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Akutavardian? I may have left. Dr. William Akoff?
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm here because Frank isn't my neighbor and he sees me go play soccer so many times a week, so.
He's actually, he's actually been hounding me. He's been hounding me for quite a while.
Yeah, so anyway, I just showed up because I wanted to tell you guys, the idea, like this gentleman just said, you got the right idea for this town. I play for City of Los Angeles twice a week and it's a great league, but it, there's a waiting list of maybe twelve teams for a six-team Monday league or fifteen teams for a Wednesday league, and they're only accepting eight. So there's always a waiting list, because not everyone can get in. So what happens is these guys start looking for other places to go play and they end up, what that gentleman said, either in Chatsworth, which is a very nice field, I've played there, but it takes forty-five minutes to get there. And I think Covina, that's another one. So Glendale is actually positioned right in the middle. So you would draw from almost all the surrounding cities, from Burbank to Pasadena and beyond, everybody who wants to play in a soccer league can show up. And I think the, the one thing that I was trying to tell Frank was, it's very important that the setting be right, because the best one I've played in was actually Chatsworth because of the way they set it up. You play maybe forty-five minutes, but you get about a three-hour workout. It's the best sport. And if, you know, my kids are only six now, but if they get older and they want to play, that would be the best place for them to learn to play. They play at AYSO and they have one season a year. It just ended in December, I think. They played four months and now eight months, they have nothing to do, no place to go play. So this setup, if it's done right, I think it will draw enough people that financially it'll be a no-brainer. So something that I, I think, I myself have fifteen guys that want to play now because we're in off-season, again, between the last season in City of Los Angeles and now it's four, three months break. So we're just looking for somewhere to play. If we had a league ongoing indoor, we would definitely be in it. That's all, I guess I'm right on time here, so.
Thank you very much.
Nice seeing everyone.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor?
He's one of the doctor, lawyer and dentist that are, at least consider themselves tremendous soccer players, I don't know.
I have one more question. On the skateboard park, did we say, or even in the sports complex, if you're a team from outside of the city, it's one fee and he inside is another fee? You know, if, if we have all these teams in the region all going to come in and try to use our facility, will there be a difference in what we charge?
I don't believe so at this point. I would submit to you that as we get this underway and bring back to you as part of your budget, the overall fee structure, we'll have a little bit of, of experience with which to make that kind of recommendation. I think at this point, it's just a matter of getting the, the structure in place and then making...
I just remembered, we did on the other things, so...
Right, no, and that's, that's a point very well taken, because I think there will be that kind of...
The doctor just brought up about all over.
That kind of demand.
Come on in.
How soon will this be up?
Quick.
How soon do I have to sign up?
We're hoping June first. June first, yes. We'll put the order for the wall, it'll take six to nine weeks and June first, hopefully.
And the floor is okay? I mean, just a little patch up?
Just a little patch up here and there that we're going to be working on.
And then maintenance and it should...
Floor should be okay.
Could we raise enough money to replace the floor?
That's the thing.
I'll move the other?
Thank you.
Second.
All right. Could I have a roll call, please?
Council members, Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Garian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes, thank you very much for calling, coming and giving us your opinions and your presentation. I think we're, we're off and running on this and I'm looking forward, I'm going to train on June first, I'll be there with, actually, I'm going to take, I'll have the doctor on my team.
I'll have my son on my team.
I'll be going against Mr. Manukian. Thank you very much. All right, next, please.
Next item is Director of Community Services at H C, Community Services and Parks, regarding proposed operation plan for the use of Cedar House at Glendale Heritage Park. C1 is motion approving plan submitted by All For Health, Health For All, Inc. to provide at-risk youth and family services commencing April 1st, 2013, and authorizing execution of an operations agreement and five-year lease agreement.
Sarah Mostow.
Mr. Duran?
Mr. Quintero, members of the city council, this is basically a follow-up to an RFP that was approved by the city council last October and issued. But in terms of background, as you might remember, during last year's budget development process, our department proposed and the council approved consolidate our youth and family services program, which had been housed at the Cedar House Historic Bungalow at Heritage Gardens Park. And that program was relocated to Pacific, the Pacific Park Community Center in order for us to realize some cost efficiencies with the staffing support and the infrastructure support that the program would get at the Pacific Park Community Center. So that left the Cedar House vacant. So part of our strategy, which we discussed with the city council last year, was the idea of issuing an RFP to the community, to community organizations for a community group to come in and provide their own at-risk youth services and to implement some programming. That way, the community would not lose the service level, but in, in fact, gain a service by having a service provider come in and use, use that facility. That would also assist us in having a presence at the Cedar House to help look over the, the park and help monitor the use of the park by the community and the safety and security of the park since it would be a vacant building. So as I mentioned earlier, in October of 2012, the city council authorized the issuance of a request for proposal to community organizations for an operations plan. Invitations were sent to thirty-five nonprofit community organizations. A total of six community organizations picked up an RFP packet, including Catholic Charities, All For Health, Health For All Incorporated, Arch Family Center, Seventeen Thirty-Six Family Crisis Center, Door of Hope and Rosemary's, Rosemary Children's Services. However, only one proposal was received and that proposal was from All For Health, Health For All Incorporated. Therefore, in January, CSP staff conducted an interview with six representatives from All For Health and evaluated their proposal, reviewed the qualifications that were submitted by All For Health, checked that they met all of the requirements of the RFP. They also submitted the pre-qualifications for financial statements and audits that were reviewed by our internal audit unit. And so based on that, staff did determine that All For Health did meet the goals and objectives and requirements of the RFP and was indeed a qualified organization and proposed to operate the type of programming that, that we saw as part of the RFP. So we determined that our recommendation would be to recommend All For Health as, to execute an operations agreement and a five-year lease agreement. They currently operate three health clinics in Glendale with their main office just down the street, half a block away, at 519 East Broadway, and including the Pacific Community Center. They operate the community center, so they already have experience working with the city and understanding the city's needs and requirements. They are a designated federally qualified health center, serving primarily low-income residents. As I mentioned earlier, they do have experience partnering with the city of Glendale. They are, their program is consistent with our priorities and, and objectives. They will be providing a mental health counseling program for teenagers and their families, which was our priority. They... They do propose to serve 250 unduplicated youth and families per year. Their operating budget is approximately $36,000. They are able to leverage the operations budget through surplus funds from their other clinic operations. They are among the at-risk target population. They will be targeting Latino and Armenian families in particular. There are two primary therapists that will be operators of the program. One is Spanish-speaking and the other is Armenian-speaking. So we feel that we have a good qualified organization with a program which meets a priority and it's a mental health program for teenagers and their families since we are recommending the execution of an operations agreement and a five-year lease agreement with All For Health. We do have representatives here to answer any questions you might have, including the two therapists that will be running the program. And so if you have any questions, we can call them up and they can describe the program in more detail.
I do have some cards. I assume it is a nonprofit, correct?
Absolutely.
Okay, I have three speaker cards. Jermaine Strickland, followed by Larry Fernandez, and then Dr. Arthur Pagosian.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, council members, staff and citizens. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to present the program to your attention. We're representing All For Health and the proposal came from Dr. Janoyan to provide the mental health services to adolescents.
And you'll need to give us your name for the record.
I am Dr. Arthur Pagosian. I'm child and adolescent psychiatrist.
Larry Fernandez, clinical director.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember, my name is Jermaine Strickland. Go ahead.
I have been working with children and adolescents and their families for the last 15 years. And I have not necessarily worked with the nonprofits in Glendale area, but I've worked with Child and Family Guidance Center where I was Director of Psychiatric Services. I work with Massa Youth Services. I worked with many organizations, always wanting to have something, to do something in Glendale for my community. And when Dr. Janoyan suggested that Cedar House can be a place where this kind of services can be provided, I volunteered to start services and provide both supervision and I also asked my two colleagues that I've been working with for the last six years. And they've been providing mental health services to youth at a clinic called Massa Youth Services, which is also a nonprofit clinic, working through Hispanic Commission. And basically, our goal is to work with All For Health to bring these services to the community with two families who have children with substance abuse problems. And, you know, the need for services is ever-growing and there are not enough providers to do these services. And this is an experienced team that will provide services with culturally sensitive and community-based interventions and also will provide evidence-based interventions that will be using the programs that already are approved through LA County, the ART program and the Seeking Safety program that many of the providers are familiar with in Glendale City. And basically, I'll stop here and give my colleagues to present the rest of the program.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and Board members. One of the things that Dr. Pagosian mentioned that I'll be specifying about is the two components, three components that are recognized as evidence-based practices and county-wide as, in addition to statewide, is known as cognitive behavioral trauma-focused treatment, number one, that's affiliated for, it's actually associated with any impairments that have to do with a level of trauma that can be associated with a minor trauma or a major trauma. And it's been recognized to be really helpful for adolescents to be involved in these kind of treatments that are group therapy-type treatments. The second component is what's known as Seeking Safety. Seeking Safety is another recognized evidence-based component that's actually was derived out of the city of, actually, was actually derived from Miami and then through the practice of research was able to be brought down to California, Los Angeles Department of Mental Health, and now other agencies such as the ones that we've worked with are working. Now, Seeking Safety itself has an addiction component, early intervention component. And the last one is, as Dr. Pagosian referred to as ART, is actually the acronym for ART, which is Aggression Replacement Therapy. So with the combination of aggression replacement, which is also often known as anger management, the addiction component and the trauma component are the three areas in which we're trying to focus and to really decrease the recidivism rates of not only addiction, but potential harmful acts that might be out there in the community and just really help the youth to be able to be more successful in whatever they're doing in terms of whether it be educational or society-based, just, you know, seek gainful employment and things of that nature.
Mr. Strickland, any comments?
Good afternoon, or good evening again, should I say. So I primarily work over at the Massa Clinic as a therapist. This is kind of new to me, so it's a pleasure to be here. The services, we took a drive by the Cedar House and looked at the surrounding community of the neighborhood and the house itself. And there is definitely a need for some type of supportive aspect for the TAE population, which is called the Transitional Age Youth Population, 15 to about 25 or so, to provide some type of mental health supportive services. What we're doing, what our hope is to do, is to provide education to the parents, the families regarding substance use, not just the regular street drugs right now, but educating them on the street drug, the drugs that the kids are using in high school, spice, salvia, bath salts. I'm sure all of you guys have been watching the news and it's a really bad thing that's going on with the drug use. So we are trying to really get the population here healthy, children.
Thank you very much. Right? It sounds, I'm all for it. I think it's a very good idea. It's a wonderful location, as you can tell, the park, the house itself is, well, it's brand-new basically, so you're moving in. Excellent location. I think the program is certainly needed, so.
Mayor, move A, C1.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Jarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, just one quick observation. It's probably worth pointing out that, as Mr. Duran had noted, this came about through the last budget process. And council was adamant that if the city were going to move away from certain lines of business, in this case, youth and family services programming because of budget cuts, that we just not leave the community in a lurch and that we find other ways to supplant that level of service, particularly as Councilmember Friedman had indicated, trying to leverage nonprofit groups. So we had done that through the CSP folks and they brought together this program that you see here before you. So it does represent, it's a small corner of the community, but it represents and casts, represents a much larger trend and casts a much larger shadow because I think it is the shape of things to come as we talk about community services, social services, and this area of programming. So it's something certainly that we will monitor and evaluate and report back.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Next, please.
Next item is a hearing at 9A, Fire Chief, regarding 2013 Annual Weed Abatement Program. 9A1 is in motion approving abatement order and directing the Agricultural Commission, Director of Weights and Measures, to abate the nuisance on each parcel.
Do you want to open the hearing or?
I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any cards.
This is our annual protest hearing for, I think it's the 670 parcels that were deemed to be nuisance.
We see it every year. I'll move 9A1.
I'll close the hearing.
A closed public hearing.
I know. I thought I heard him clear it too.
Close it.
9A1.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Manukian?
Yes.
Jarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Thank you, Chief.
Next is oral communication. This is the portion where discussion is limited. Item is not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. See Manager Mayor for the matter to the appropriate Department for Investigation report. And your first card is from Norah Haritunian.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Haritunian.
Councilmembers and staffs. My name is Norah Haritunian and I've been living in Glendale since 2001. And I used to be a firefighter back in my country and I involved in a storm and I got spinal cord injury. Since then, I stopped walking and it was hard to be in this country and not to have a job. And my wife stopped working since then. I couldn't work. And we find a place, like a single place, and we lived over there. And my daughter born and she's 12 now. So I've been asked many places to live in that could be wheelchair access and comfortable with, so for me. But anyway, I couldn't find any of that kind of place and I fill out many application for lottery in Glendale City. But unfortunately, I couldn't win. And I still, I still live in the same place and struggling with, so small with the stairs and it's hard to, I mean, to, with the helpers, with my wife. But anyway, this is, I know you're here to help citizens of Glendale to live comfortable and freely, unstressful. I mean, this is, this is, I mean, I've been waiting a long time patiently to, but looks like those patients, the time is over. I came in this time in here. It's thanks for the opportunity to getting a chance to talk and sharing with you. I had a chance to talk Mr. Rafi Manukian on the phone and on the television. And unfortunately, I couldn't get any positive answers in the living place. So if there will be any chance to have, I know some places, not only me, some people on the wheelchair, they, some people on the wheelchair can walk and they have comfortable bathrooms and wheelchair access into the house. But unfortunately, some of them, they don't walk, as me, I can walk. But anyway, well, that's kind of stuff. If there will be any chance to having some, those places like, so housing places that could be comfortable for access, wheelchair access, and I would be glad to get and leave that places. I know Glendale is a very good place to live. It's good in buses and some stores and anything, access, wheelchair access is good. And it's also comfortable and a safety city. But unfortunately, I'm struggling still, 12 years in that apartment. I can't move any places because it will be harder than that. I don't know what to do. But I'm waiting for any recommendation from you and I expect any positive answers and...
Okay, after all of the cards are finished, that's when we respond to the people. So just, if you go back and wait until we finish with all the other speakers. All right, thank you very much. Al Hoffman, followed by Tony Passarella.
Good evening, Mayor, staff members and people in the public. Al Hoffman, native of Glendale. I came to speak about the Proposition B. I must say, I was a bit taken back about the city manager's op-ed in the paper last Saturday. He stated that as city manager, he's precluded from taking any kind of position on an issue like this and then proceeded to take a position, support the city council and their plans for backing the Proposition B. The charter is really okay. It maybe should be clarified a little bit more. But the charter should protect above all the GWP and protect the ratepayers. This transfer to come about every year, 25% right into the general fund, is totally unacceptable, in my view, to be beneficial to the GWP. There's so much infrastructure in the waterworks and electrical that needs attention. I was completely frustrated the passage of the smart meters. The meters themselves were okay. We got them from the government, put them in. But the program to compute all this stuff and do all these things, totally unnecessary. The $54 million that you've already approved, wouldn't that have been wonderful to have in the GWP right now? You wouldn't have had to pass another $30 million bond. But oh, no. Don't listen to the public. You all know better. Technically, none of you were, are, have the knowledge to make that technical decision. Mr. Weaver was an engineer, but I don't think he had experience in large computing systems. When I came to speak against it, Mayor Quintero said, gee, he didn't understand how Al Hoffman, an engineer, a JPL, didn't understand the benefit of the smart meters. My gosh, it's because I was an engineer, working with large computer systems, that I knew you were getting into something you couldn't deal with. I confronted the former manager Steiger about it. He says, oh, you just don't understand. I said, I do understand what large systems do, software, it's a problem. He says, oh, come on down, I'll show you the computers. I said, I know what computers look like. I want to know what's going on inside of them. And I'll tell you, it's not a straightforward thing. I don't think the whole system's working yet. I'm sure you're going to have to spend more money. I've complained about this report we get, you know, my comparison to my neighbor. I really don't care what my neighbor's doing or what anybody else is doing. I know when I use water and electricity, I have to pay for it. And so I don't need to know that, oh, my gosh, my neighbors, I'm doing better or worse than them. It doesn't mean a thing. And it's a waste of GWP funds to do that. And, but you keep authorizing this expenditure and that's what's wrong. At the forum last week, at the Corning Council Forum, some of the candidates said, you know, what you lack on the city council is planning expertise. And they hit it right on the head. You make commitments to funds that you have no plans on how it's really going to work out. This $54 million you expended on the smart meter program, totally ludicrous thing to do. At the time where we need money, we're running short. We could have had the smart meters replace the old ones if that was because they were provided. But don't try to build it up and make this big system that's going to do everything that you can ever do with your electric things. It's just ridiculous. I loved to go out when I had my old analog meter. I could see the wheel going around and I could tell how much energy I was using. Now I have to buy a program and everything to look at it, you know, and it's just, it was a waste. And you erred considerably in making that decision. Thank you.
Tony Passarella, followed by Harry Zallos.
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers, staff and viewing audience. My name is Tony Passarella. I'm going to change my approach a little bit on the water fluoridation issue that I've been bringing up the last several weeks here at council. The date, the debate should be over. I mean, for all intents and purposes, this has been a 50-year debate with regards to water fluoridation. It should well be over. Case in point, if you were to research on Google, you would come up with 21,100,000 search results and the vast majority are warnings about water fluoridation. If you were to go on YouTube, you would come up with 18,000 videos warning, warning us about the negative effects of water fluoridation. So for all intents and purposes. So for all intents and purposes, this should be all over. And I did confirm today with Ray Notario, I think I'm saying his name right, the GWP principal water quality specialist. In fact, we do have fluoride in Glendale water. It comes from, according to him, the Metropolitan Water District as a fluoride. He states that Glendale supply, there's no fluoride added, you know, from these sources here. Did you know that fluoride is also in anesthetics, antibiotics, automobile wheel cleaning products, in bottled juices, bottled water, chewing gum, pesticide residue, glass etching and chrome cleaning agents, household cleaning products, insecticides, instant teas, mattresses, milk, processed foods, rodent sides, Scotch Guards, soda, tap water, Teflon, toothpaste, we're going to stop our toothpaste. Folks at home, in case you haven't noticed on the side, because of the enormous brainwashing that we've been under for 50 years in regards to the dentist saying that water fluoridation stops cavities, well, that's a complete fraud and a lie. And the FTC wanted to, one of the manufacturers of toothpaste to put this warning label right on the side of the carton here. And it reads, warnings, keep out of the reach of children under six years of age. If more than used for brushing is accidentally swallowed, get medical help or contact poison control right away. Active ingredients, sodium fluoride. I buy my toothpaste at Whole Foods, it's Toms. There's no warning label on this. People at home, please, don't let your kids get these, brush your teeth with, with this fluoride-filled toothpaste. I'm just going to throw some more stuff on the wall here and see what sticks. I didn't plan a lot for that. I am, again, changing my strategy here a little bit. The FDA ordered, we just went over that, 23,000 calls a year are made to the Poison Control Center in the United States where children have swallowed toothpaste. Sodium fluoride is in fact a rat poison and it's a roach killer. The crippling effects, here's a list, arthritis, bone fracture, brain effects, cardiovascular disease, diabetes, endocrine disruption, gastrointestinal effects, hypersensitivity, kidney disease, male fertility, pineal gland problems, skeletal fluorosis, thyroid disease, acute toxicity. Fluoride is a poison. We are medicating ourselves and our children without a prescription. Dr. Dean Beck, chief chemist and founder of the National Cancer Institute, has been quoted as saying, and I quote, fluoride causes more human cancer and causes it faster than any other chemical. It's not regulated by the EPA, the FDA, the CDC. And my charge is that, let's put it on the water and power bill. Let's put the same type of warning that's on the toothpaste, because it's the same thing in the toothpaste that's in our water. Can't we put that on the, on the bill, warning the people that they're ingesting a toxic substance? Thank you. My name is Tony Passarella. Thank you for your attention.
Harry Zavos.
Counsel, my name is Harry Zavos, and I too believe everybody has a right to their own opinion on Measure B, but not as to the facts. And tonight, I would like to address two of those facts. First fact, each year of all receipts paid to GWP, the city transfers approximately $21 million to be credited to the General Budget Fund that pays for general appropriations, things like parks, libraries, fire, et cetera. We know this because repeatedly from the dais, we're told that if these transfers don't take place, some of these services might have to be cut back. Second fact, what does the charter say about crediting GWP receipts to the General Budget Fund? And here I read from Article 11, Section 14 of the charter. A fund to be known as the General Budget Fund is hereby created. All receipts from general tax levy, licenses, fines, permits, and interest on bank deposits, and all other receipts, except those from the Department of Glendale Water and Power, those which are corrected, collected for a specific purpose, are herein order, ordered to be credited to some other fund shall be credited to said fund. And all disbursements on account of general budget appropriations shall be charged to such, the General Budget Fund. All general receipts, except those from the Department of Glendale and Water, shall be credited to said fund that pays for general appropriations. Now, this isn't something over which we can agree to disagree. It says what it says. But in spite of the fact that the charter says that you don't credit GWP receipts to that General Budget Fund that pays for general appropriation, the city continues to transfer $21 million to that General Budget Fund to pay precisely for those general, for those general appropriations. What does Measure B do? Well, Measure B modifies the charter so it conforms to the city practice. Because, one, it does away with that prohibition that you see there in Section 14, Article 11. And it goes one step further. It requires up to 25% of GWP receipts to be used to pay for general appropriations, not to provide electricity and water to ratepayers, but to pay for general appropriations. That's one of the reasons I intend to vote no on Measure B. This is not merely a accounting measure, it is substantive. Now, the charter does provide that GWP surplus monies, monies left over after all the requirements of the utility have been met, can be transferred, but not to the General Budget Fund that pays for general appropriations. It expressly says they go to the General Reserve Fund. And incidentally, along with surpluses from GWP, that's where surpluses from the General Budget Fund go. If you read further in Section 14 of Article 11, it reads as follows. The credit balance, if any, in said General Budget Fund at the end of any fiscal year, the amount of which is in excess of the amount of all outstanding demands and liabilities, unpaid on account of the general budget appropriations for said fiscal year, shall be transferred to the General Reserve Fund. So surpluses from the General Reserve Fund, I was from the General Budget Fund, and surpluses from the Glendale Water and Power get commingled and lose their identity in that General Reserve Fund. Now, next time, I'm going to address that General Reserve Fund and what the charter says it does, and what Measure B does to that reserve fund. And it also is another reason why I'm going to vote no on Measure B. But in the meantime, I've done an analysis of the current charter, and that can be found online at www, if I can just complete this, www.OGGC.org/Harry.pdf. And as part of that analysis, there's a flow chart as to how the funds operate that impinge on GWP, and more importantly, the text from the charter as to how those funds operate. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. You're allowed to maintain your facts on that website, right, Mr. Zavos?
Well, no, I, I, Mayor, I just quote the charter. And I've always tried to give people the references to the charter so they can check for themselves, so they can be sure I'm not misstating anything.
Just kidding. On Mr. Hartunian's issue, I assume we can.
Get Mr. Zovak from Housing to check in with him. We don't control, I don't believe we control any housing, but he may have a bead on disabled access housing that we can refer him to.
Or even, I assume he's also going to get a preference for Section 8 because of, and can, yeah. All right.
Mayor.
Mr. Weaver.
Comment to Mr. Choa. In my 16 years here, I never, ever remember any council I've served on transferring 25% GWP to the general fund. Never. And I'm hearing it more and more during this election cycle, that we're transferring 25%. It's going to be mandatory if we pass Measure B. Unless we pass a motion at the end of the fiscal year to, to transfer a less amount, we've never even approached 25%. There hasn't been a necessity to do it. I, I sat here and I explained that back in 2000, the transfer was about 10 million, and how every year between then and now, it has increased each year. And now, we're starting to make strides in returning it back down. But I also stated here, because I went through the last 10 years of budgets to find out why an intelligent council or council sitting here increased that transfer. There were legitimate reasons why we reacted to what the public wanted us to do. And we did it. Just the one example, people wanted more police. We passed more police. What do you think? That costs more money. So where is the money coming from? Water and power. It's things like that that happen in good faith because of what the public has asked us to do. Now to criticize a sport when we are aware of the fact, and we're trying to go back the other way, in spite of the revenue stream we have in this city right now, economy? Oh, come on. It's a break. But cut out this foolishness that we're transferring 25%. I'd like somebody to show me and write, am I right or wrong on that?
No, you're correct, sir. You have not transferred 25%. In fact, when you look historically at how much has been transferred previously when it was electric and water, and then water was done away with, after that, after the council weighed what the liability was in the wake of, of the court decisions that had come down, as a percentage basis, the transfer really has been gradually increased. It has not increased in some overly dramatic fashion. And we've, this is, this is, much of this is ask and answer. What you'll hear from a number of speakers is akin to somebody showing you a circle and trying to convince you that it's a sphere. The charter does indeed say what, what the language on the screen said, in terms of those funds are to be deposited into GWP. But then later on, the charter also says that thou shalt move funds over to the general fund unless you adopt a lesser amount, which of course you have. As you know, we've talked about this ad nauseam, under modern accounting rules, you can't transfer equity from a surplus fund, the way that, and still maintain GAAP compliance and not get the, the finding that was accounted, or that was described earlier, for external representations. And, and I would submit to you, that's what we are most concerned about. You know, we, we've had those discussions, and so I won't belabor it here, except maybe to say to Mr. Hoffman's point, you know, the op-ed that was submitted, for his edification and for the community, because I do take that objectivity and that professionalism very seriously, if I took a position in that op-ed, it was a position to relate what true facts were objective facts. Because at the end of the day, the charter says what it says, and it's going to say what it's going to say regardless of Measure A or Measure B passing or not passing. I have to be able to administer the terms of, of what that charter says in a way that is objective. And so I think, you know, that's what we've endeavored to do.
Would it be hard for staff to produce what percentage we have transferred in the last 16 years I've been here? Would that be hard to do?
No. In fact, I think we.
It's not even close to 25%.
No. I want to say we are about 13 and a half percent.
That's what I was going to say.
And our goal is to get to 11%, recognizing full well that as revenues increase and costs are held constant, that that ratio will emerge. Keep in mind too, because a lot of hay gets made over the, our compliance with, with state law. The state constitution has changed rather dramatically over the last 30 years, whether it was Prop 13, Prop 218, Prop 26, and we have, as a matter of practice, had to keep pace with that. So to somehow take a look at what Glendale has done, or any municipality for that matter, and then point a finger and say, what you're doing is out of compliance with the state constitution, when that was determined to be something that the council was focused on and changes were made, well, it isn't as though the council did something to place itself out of compliance with what the state constitution was. It was a matter of past practice that had been honored for generations, let alone decades. Yet, you know, we can choose to be upset and choose to be indignant, but it doesn't really change the fact that the general fund transfer is one of the largest sources of funds to the city's general fund that pays for two-thirds of which, public safety and quality of life services. You can have it this way, or you can have it that way in this life, but you can't have it both ways.
I understand. Sorry, I didn't want to belabor the point, but I just wanted to get that little point straightened out.
Thank you. I, I do want to set the record straight, and I've heard this many times off from the dais, and with all due respect to Mr. Weaver, the issue of hiring more police officers was not an issue, as I remember it, that came up from the public. I remember our former police chief, Randy Adams, coming to the council and presenting a gory picture regarding the Eurasian mafia that was supposed to take over over the next so many years, and we were going to have waves of crimes because of this Eurasian mafia, and that there were entities from the federal government that were in the area, and that we needed to supplement and hire additional 25 police officers, and we needed the funds. And he presented a number of gory pictures about the activities of the Eurasian mafia, as he called it. And that is why we voted to add 25 new police officers. It was not a demand from the public.
As you're right.
Okay. It was Randy Adams who made that suggestion.
And we decided to do it.
Right. It was not, my point is, it wasn't an outcry from the public.
I used the wrong example.
Right. It was Randy, Police Chief Randy Adams.
I apologize.
I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you. I got new business.
You're giving me that look like, don't say it, Mr. Weaver.
Thought we were done. No.
What I would like to do was, is to cordially invite Mr. Hoffman and all the critics of the transfer, not to just sit there and throw rocks at the passing cars, but to join us all when we go through our budget and we allocate funds to the different departments, and help point out where we can save approximately $20 million in our budget, if cut and when cut, would eliminate the need for the transfer from the GWP to the general fund. And that goes for Mr. Zavos, that goes for Mr. Hoffman, and anyone who thinks that the transfer is improper. Please help us wean ourselves off this transfer. Show us where we can cut. You want to cut police, or fire, or libraries, or parks, or public works, any one of the multitude of departments that we have. Sit down with us, work with us, and you may have some great ideas. And Mr. Milano's here quite often, but his suggestions aren't necessarily where we can cut money in a practical and feasible manner. But there are brighter minds out there, I'm sure. Please sit down with us, and let's talk it over, and we may have some good news during this budget cycle with your help.
Mr. Weaver, you have some new business?
New business. I'd like to move to the council, the city of Glendale hereby authorizes the city attorney or his designate to, on behalf of the city of Glendale, enter into stipulation with the Environmental Protection Agency, EPA, California Department of Toxic Substances Control, DISC, and the settling work defendants. Control, DISC, and the Settling Work Defendants/Glendale Respondents, GRG, in the matter of United States versus ITT Industries, Inc., et al., case number CV99-00552MRP, for the purpose of maintaining the status quo operation of the Glendale Operable Unit, GOP, no, GOU, related to the San Fernando Basin Volatile Organic Compounds, VOC, cleanup pending the issuance of new remediable measures.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Friedman.
Yes.
Huguenot.
Yes.
Jarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes.
When we adjourned in the memory of...
Geraldine Jerry Ripley.
Be adjourned.